United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heaven father, we want to come to you tonight just thank you for our time for another day of life and for being with us, watching over us and caring for us, meeting our needs and help us to look to you for guidance in all that we do. We pray tonight that you'd help us as we go through this meeting, that you'd guide us and direct us in what we need to do and what we need to say. Help us to be able to feel your presence here. I pray that you take us and go in this community to be the community we should be. Be with those that are around about us that are having problems and have needs in their lives, continue to meet them and be with our military wherever they are, continue to guide and watch over them. Thank you for your love for us and care for us and you send your presence in Jesus' name.
Alderman Betts, President. Alderman Doray, President. Alderman Garner, here. Alderman Coy, President. Alderman Probst, here. Fourth is this.
If you would you have a front of your minutes from the previous meeting? You've had a chance to review those. I will entertain a motion to accept the previous minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, I mean Alderman Doray, second by Alderman Garner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item we've got is we have a motion to open a public hearing. We're going to be amending our 2017-18 budget. I will step out and say that this was something that we did advertise for, that we found out did not have to be done. However, we are going to open it up and close it. We will have a meeting where the public comment on the amended budget will be held at that time for the approval of the ordinance, which will allow public comment at that time. So, Alderman, can I hear a motion to move on to public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, or here, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in a public hearing. Any questions about amended budget is available for review. It will be published in our public journal. What's the publication date, Jay?
The amended budget's available now.
Yeah, yes, available now.
That's right. And then so the adoption, the ordinance will be up for adoption on June 22nd at noon, at the special meeting of that day.
Any questions on that process? Okay, can I have a motion to close public hearing on amended budget? Motion made by Alderman Garner, or here, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor? Okay. All right, number two, as I said earlier, that the 2017-18 amended budget is available for review and will be put in public record and we'll be having that vote on that ordinance on June 22nd. At this time, I'd like to introduce that for amendment, amended 2017-18 budget does not require action, just requires we introduce this ordinance and it's available for review.
So, we understand that there is not to be discussion on it during this meeting, that all discussions will be held at the special meeting?
That's when the public comment is.
What about the Alderman comment?
Pardon?
What about the Alderman comment?
At that time.
Okay.
Okay. Now, item number three, we have our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moll, from your financials. Say it.
Okay, the financials that I presented tonight are for April 30th, and I am comparing these actual numbers to the proposed amended budget. The financials will provide a projection of where we will be at year end. The balance sheet is as of April the 30th, and we're still showing the reserve, 2.3 in the hydro. We're showing a receivable of hydro royalties of 4.6 million. We're showing a power cost payable of $900 million. And we're also showing a due from other funds, which is a liability that the hydro owes to some of the other funds of 444,000. This was because we didn't have the money to pay the power cost and we borrowed money at 700,000 from the line of credit to be able to pay this power cost. And so, the money had to be paid back from hydro fund to the other funds. So, I want to point out, the industrial park fund has $709,000 of receivables from Project Blue. This has been adjusted based on information that we have on this memorandum of understanding. It's, we were to, the lease amount was over $100,000 a month, and this has been changed to reflect what was in the memorandum of understanding that we were to get. And it was in the original agreement also, but it was, took so long to get done that in April I have changed this to reflect what really should happen with this money. And so, it's set up as receivable for $709,000. Let's see. The utility fund is showing receivables of 1.8 million, which is for the utilities at the end of April. On the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in current balances for the 10 months ending April the 30th, we're showing a combined total revenues of 27 million, 27.6 million. We're showing total expenditures of 25.9 million, and we're showing a net change of position of 1.6 million. And then our budget to actual comparison, which again, I have made this comparison as of the amended, projected, proposed amended budget, which, if you look at the last page as far as the totals go, we're showing that we have, we're at 70% complete on our total actual to total budget for revenues. We're at 71% of total expenditures to total budget. And we're at 1.6 million versus where we expect to be at the end of this fiscal year is 2.4. Now, this does include the $4 million that we are to receive from the sale of Project Blue, the amended, it does. Amended budget includes that. So, that, and it also includes paying down a lot of credit to zero on the proposed amended budget. But, at the end of the day, we should be at 1.6 million as of the end of April. Let's see. Okay, that's pretty much it. Presenting, any questions?
Any questions?
How much did Blue actually owe before concessions of $487,500 was made from there?
Well, it was $100,000 every month, you know, from, I think it started really in May of last year till now, and they've paid some of that money. But I, according to Heather, it's not really a concession. It was in the contract originally. It was, you could get it at the front or you could get it at the end. But it all was supposed to have happened before November. So, it's really went past that. So, now I'm truing it up to what we have, a memorandum of understanding is that it should end up being. So, that's why I treated my lenders on April financials.
Now, do those concessions take into account any balance due on any other services that have been provided?
Not in the industrial park fund. Now, there are some services, well, for the utilities, you know, we haven't got all that true, but they do, you know, they do owe us from those utilities. And we received some payment on that.
What's an approximate number on utilities?
Heather, you may know, she's in here, she may know better than I do. We've, you know, we've kept up with that information, but I don't know the number right off. You know, sometimes it was $7,000 to $11,000 on their utility deals. And they, but they have paid us like 150,000 altogether?
Toward the utilities or just toward, like, all in?
All in.
Okay. Do we have a close statement for that yet?
We do. Heather, would you like to address that?
Yes, so, according to the lender, they are verbally stating that we will close by the 28th and report on the 29th.
Okay.
And if not then? If not then?
If not then?
Yes.
I mean, that's what we're going, based on what the bank has told us. I mean, we have...
Heather, I would like to address, we, this is, we have the state director with the USDA, a week ago, I think, several of us were in on that conversation, a lot of the staff was talking with them. Everything's ready, you know, what the holdup was, the lender, they, as big as that loan is, they're having to participate, that loan with other institutions, and that's all that was required to be finished that up. We talked with them, they said it's a done deal, and that's supposed to be all wrapped up, and we got the closing, that'd be in the 28th, or we're going to close on the 28th and report on the 29th, so we can get in on this fiscal year. But everything's been approved by USDA, the credit union has approved the loan, they just had some participants that they had to pull together some documents from them, because they had to share that underwriting with other institutions. So, that was kind of the holdup, and it's been a, been a process. It has been, we knew it was too critical, yes, or did we stick our neck out a little bit, but knowing everything that we knew, I think is coming to fruition, and I think it's something that's going to be great for our area, it's great for our community, so...
Question was, if not then?
I would say it's going to be then. If not then, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But we will continue to accumulate the expenses, yes, and go after somebody or kill them. Any other questions?
One of, they have to cap to the close in the funds that they owe us will be. Do you have a timeframe in which those will be paid?
Those 450,000 will be paid and closed, and the other balance will be paid over five years, annual payments, and I think it comes around 40 or 50,000 a month, I think, per year.
Heather, I talked to them, and I wanted you to tell them...
No, we're going to recover, we're going to recover those funds, for sure. Okay? All right. Any other questions? All right, and number four, special license, we didn't have any this month, I will sign that case, we didn't have any. And on number six, case you wonder why there's a lot of blue uniforms here, they, today, police department's going to recognize Ms. Gail Cowan and her service to the town, so... Joey?
I'm honored to be able to present Ms. Gail Cowan, her retirement plaque, 20 years, served as a day as registered clerk and dispatcher and city, of course. So, thank you for a lot of years in and a lot of time, so everybody give her a round of applause.
God would just step down in your backyard with, probably, that money. About three, blue. All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief, I appreciate it. It's been a great honor to serve this community and all the capacities that I performed at the police department. It's been my pleasure and my honor. Thank y'all.
Okay. Number seven, we look for a board resolution to enter to a cooperative and never agreement with the state of Louisiana to lease the office space at the day convention centers and authorized aircraft to execute the CEA on behalf of the town. Any questions? As y'all know, several of the state agencies were being pushed out of the old courthouse. It's in some bad state of repairs, and so, we have space available, and those offices came open and put a lot of work done. We also, as you know, the hydro building was, they let us know they were going to move offices out there and move them down to the plant with the hydro water building. We considered moving them there, but at the last minute, they said, wait, we're changing our mind, we think we want to keep the presence in there, so that's kind of changed that up. So, there was a good landing spot there, convention center, and I'll be able to, you know, receive some funds for that, so, anyway.
I got a question on that. My concern is that building, what was the reason for us not, how many people were actually in the courthouse that left? I know councilman agents went to fair.
Everybody.
What else was in that building?
Well, libraries there were there, same.
Right, but there were bad chicks, right? Bad chick building?
That's the new courthouse.
But anyway, how many actually were in that building besides, I know that councilman agents?
Council agents, county agents.
County agents, all in favor?
So, and my question is, we had said something about that three or four months ago, you know, about, we knew they were leaving. But from what I hear, councilman agents went to fair, but we didn't all from that building. Is that correct?
We all did other options, we all, we all from other buildings that we had in spaces.
But what, what would make us not want to give that building, I mean, hydro, how many people were going to stay in that building?
We don't know yet. We, they haven't decided yet. I mean, that's, that's what the holdup was. They have an empty floor, and they said they were going to pull out, but yeah, when they admitted to the catalyst who was the, called them and on them, they said, no, hold up, you know, and they, so they, they didn't want to confuse them until they make the decision on what they're going to do with the upper floor, so, what they're going to put there.
That really kind of hurt us, though, as a city, to let them, if they don't stay, you know?
Let me ask you, the part that really mattered to me, and that's the fee system system, the administrative offices of councilman agents, is what we, you know, and my concern was that, that's someone near that's going to seem to get.
Right.
As long as it stayed, I understood the move, so I...
Where did they move?
There.
No, where did the, you said?
The lead place.
Yeah.
It's still there. But we're still working to try to get them into that building. If it's not, are we going to try to continue to get that revenue from that building, if hydro moves out, to get them placement in that building, is what I'm asking.
We're trying to find somebody for it, yes.
Yeah.
But until they tell us that they're for sure in that, I feel that we don't have that...
Well, I thought that was a dumb deal.
Well, we thought it, well, we thought it was, but we found that wasn't, because when that was passed up to their corporate catalyst, Brookfield was the one to make the decision to move the offices from the manager down to hydro. But when it asked catalyst for their approval of it, they said, no, hold up, you know, they think there's an agreement, contract in play where they have to maintain those offices.
Are they paying rent?
Uh-huh.
Are they paying rent there?
No, they don't pay rent. And we have to maintain the building, that was an agreement, and it's gone back, you know, that's one of the things they're looking at, is...
Did that agreement, I heard, I mean, I'm just here to say what I heard from different sources, but did that agreement say they had to maintain the presence in that building or the presence in by day?
I can't answer that for sure. I know it's either one or the other.
Well, I can add something.
Sure.
One small thing. The, where it stands right now with dealing with Tanya, who's a Brookfield employee, trying to be the go-between between us and the owners who are way above her, she can't actually talk with them, is that the last I heard is possibly sharing space and allowing room for somebody else to go in there that we can collect some rent from, that still exists.
Okay.
So, that's the first option we still have, is that they will really need just a small amount of space, except they got a lot of documents and a lot of stuff up that they got to protect, so...
Right.
Working around that, there still may be a possibility to add some space up there around.
Okay.
So, that's what we hope, to get somebody to vote for that decision.
Okay. Because I talked to Joe Berry, and he said y'all were still in ongoing negotiation with the state, beginning, you got housed down there at the convention center now, but you'd have an opportunity to possibly move back into that building.
That's right, that's that shared space.
Okay.
What kind of revenue will this bring to the town?
$10,000 a year.
Fantastic.
That's the top that they, that's above what they normally pay, but they went to the board and state and got that for them. That's not a lot of money, but if more pays, they're calling it.
Calling it a bill.
They're paying everything else, and that's all.
Any other questions on that? Can I hear a motion? If we have a resolution for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make it by Alderman Doray, second, by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number eight, it's required by ordinance that we set the reserve amount for a hydro fund in June of each year, and this year, the calculation, as you know, last year, it required 1.9 million, and we, we left it at 2.3, which was over and above what's required. This year, if you go by the calculation, what's required to have in the reserve fund is 1,980,000, and it's just up to the board's pleasure where they want to set it at 1,980,000 or leave it at 2.3 million. And so, if y'all want to discuss that at this time, I'm...
In a meeting that you and I had, you mentioned that you may want it to be worded that we could continue it at 2.3 with the option to decrease if the town needed the revenue.
Down to the required...
To the required amount. So, if it, if worded that way, would that mean that you would not be required to come before the board to request that reduction?
Well, I mean, this, this is a big expenses, item number, and I don't have the ordinance with me, I think item number seven or six says that, you have, there's monies that need to be paid, and these funds aren't there to pay bills, they can go to pay general fund expenses.
As a loan, though, is my understanding.
Yes, yes, no, it wouldn't be a loan. But now, I'm treating it as a loan because I want to keep that in, in there, I want to keep it intact.
Yep.
I like it in there. But rather than borrowing money or something like that, when you've got that excess reserves and you're running short, you could access that, yeah, we would, yeah, we would notify, you know, the board, you know, that might, something to do, it's real critical, I mean, I think we should be, you know, appropriate those funds, we all appropriate, but we got to pay bills and let you know that we did it, and it, you know, being replaced at some point in the future.
Yeah, I'm saying, thank you, that's a loan, it'll be replaced. But that's a motion, probably.
Just whatever the board's thinking, isn't it? I mean, I just thought it's safe, you just, and right now, our last power bill that we paid, we had to pay our 6% was 900, about a million dollars.
900.
990,000. That's, that's, the previous month was 900 and something.
900.
So, if you got to afford to have a low water year, or if you have the $900,000 bills hitting you, that's close to $3 million, you know, if you, you wouldn't want to have to borrow, if you didn't have the reserve, are pretty close to it to fund that. You know, the way things are looking, I wouldn't have a low, not the wood, low river, say high river, it's not that. I'll entertain any, any requests that y'all like.
I'd like to see, say, over here, maybe, where it's at.
Okay. You want to make that in a, well...
Sorry, we couldn't hear out here.
Alderman Betts suggested we leave it at 2.3.
I also agree that we should leave it at the 2.3, but would make certain that any reduction in it should come back before the board for approval.
Okay. You want to put that, I mean, once you...
Chair, I'm not fine with it.
So, basically, we set it 2.3, and any, it will, funds could be available to 1, I mean, 1,980,000 with approval of board.
Yes, sir.
For expenditure, I mean, excess reserve. Okay? Can I hear a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
Alderman Betts, second by Alderman Probst. Okay, now, number nine, we have discussion of the summer youth program, and Pastor Raymond Riley is going to address the board in.
Good evening, Mayor Craft, Board of, came before you all last year and asked you about a summer program that I've been running for 26 years or now, 27 years, because you all allowed me to run that program last year. I hadn't talked with Murray or you since then, other than the thing when I asked you about putting it on this agenda. It's a program that we began each evening, Monday through Thursday, 5:00, 30:00, 9:00 at night. We have activities to keep the kids and young adults, because it's not just for children, young adults off the streets during the summer months at night. We've been very successful by past mayor, chief of police, sheriff's department. We have patrol down through there in the evening time, you know, we're not asking any police to stay in there, so we don't want any parents or anybody to feel that it's not safe and violent in Wichita either. We basically have four employees that we have, have been having. It costs the city approximately $4,224, but four employees. We ask that you all allow us to continue that program this year. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address.
Well, I do, well, I don't know what your question, but just concerns that I have and have received from different people in the public, and it's only two. The first one is, it doesn't seem like the volume of kids, or there's a volume of kids using the program. I, I don't know, my little brother does come, but I don't go to see him. But it has been told to me that it's not a great volume of kids. The second thing is complaints about employees as far as family members. And I think I suggested last year, if you could potentially try to seek kids or children that are even the 10th, 11th, 12th grade, college students, maybe try to bring them on board to let them do their summer job, from the complaints that I have been getting from just different people in the community, feeling that it shouldn't be family related, but you should seek outside, potentially seek outside of those kids to other kids as well. And this is just my suggestion, for the complaint or concern about the volume of kids, I ask that you maybe incorporate a sign-in sheet with the kids to keep a regular account of how many kids are participating and coming to this program. Also, once again, hire three student workers with one adult worker, and three student workers would be an average of 10th, 11th, 12th grade, freshman college age. When you hire the student workers, they're going to be pretty much, these kids will tell their friends and family, those who are the family members are, will tell other kids, whatever, if we're lacking, if you're lacking the kids to bring more kids on and down to the program. Because I, as a kid, I attended the program, and I don't want to see the program go the way, I want to see what we can do, what we could, options that we can take to make the program even more successful, more people continue to come to the program. I did inquire from some of the kids in our community, and I asked them why they were not attending this program, and the outcome of the response that I got was recreational activity is pretty much basketball and ping pong. I know when I can remember, when I was a kid, they had activities for kids of our age, even from 2 to 40 years old, whether it be in coloring books, the bouncing balls, the net four, you know, whatever. It was activities for every age bracket. Maybe if we, this is a potential thought, too, maybe if you did away with one of your workers and took those ones to maybe take care of the other activities to make sure you catch our age brackets. So, that's my suggestion overall, my thought process to you.
Now, let me address everything you just said, because you're really strictly going by hearsay. Every day is not going to be crowded. I come in here, and the board of Alderman Meeting don't be crowded every night, and some nights are going to be crowded. I promise you, last week, we started, last week, like we always start, but we always start with a basketball camp. We had 69 kids in the basketball camp. Ran that camp with Mr. Garrett Stewart, Fisher Cade, and Lisa A. We have attended more than basketball and ping pong. They, they, uh, little kids fun cards, they can connect four, they can dominoes, they can checkers, uh, they can, uh, phase ten cards. Matter of fact, even a period of the last part of the summer, I even do a connect four tournament. So instead of hearsay, we can come and see. Because when you throw out a lot of hearsay, you make people that don't ever come down there think it's a waste of public funds and it's not. It can't be successful for twenty-six years and not be something to do. That, that can't happen. I, I don't care what you do. If you're doing something twenty-six years and it ain't broke, you don't fix it. You allow it to continue to run and you help fund it. Now, I've never had to come before the board, and I understand we have a new mayor, we have a new board of Alderman. I've never had to come before the board until last year to talk about this program and it's been successful. One or two people that don't want it to be successful are always find something negative to say about anything. I don't care what it is. Of course, I hired, uh, family members because I'm not dealing with children, I'm dealing with adults. You can't have children watch adults. It don't work. Because if a child tells a grown man something to do, he gonna scare him to death. Boom, that's the end of that child, right then. Now, I don't mind hiring a child. Last year, you all gave me the opportunity to run the program. I got a check every two weeks and I gave it to another kid that was in college to come down there and work, watch, clean up after it was over with. The thing with it is, I believe you're making a big thing out of something that don't have to be. Just allow, now, if, if you want to come and monitor, I, I really don't care because I don't have anything to hide. I just want to keep our kids safe during the summer month, give them something to do, keep them off the corner, because of item nine, double workshop. Every kid coming there is not a perfect kid. I can't say there are some kids that are coming in that haven't been through the judicial system, but when they come through that door, they respect me, they respect the employees that are there because they are adults or a college teen, or a college person that's in that gym. I think I pretty much addressed everything that you had concern with, but when you come with concern, if you've heard all those concerns, I think you should have came down there and checked it out and stopped just hearing, uh, hearsay.
Well, I heard it too. And I was, I came down and picked up my son and wasn't the ten people come out of there. Oh, he's not the only one that heard it.
What's that?
But I still feel like it still should just be families, should be other people besides your family working down there.
But aren't you his mom?
Yes, I am.
One of the things that I think the town ought to do, since it is something that the town is, is helping to fund, and, and I'll be honest with you, I had never heard about the program until I became an Alderman. And what I wish that the town could do is get our marketing department involved to help create flyers or something like that, so that we can spread the word, so that more children would know about it. Perhaps some churches, daycares, things like that, have some toys that could donate to the program, like the four H extension office recently that gave additional, you know, toys and, and games. So as far as, you know, people not knowing about it and not being there, perhaps the city could help out with that. Because if it, if it helps the children, if it helps the community, we should be all in, we should be one hundred percent on board with it.
Well, the thing of it is, people know about the program.
Yeah.
It's just that everybody don't come every day.
Of course.
Now, I can, I can go down there in the morning time and it may be five kids, and the day on, not there, it may be twenty-five, thirty kids. You can't say, it's just like school time. Everybody don't go to school every day. I mean, some people try to have perfect attendance, and then some people just go to school and every now and then, then they miss a date. And that might just so happen to be the day that somebody come in and a lot of people are not there and they say, well, this program is a waste of time because there's really not anybody there. Okay? Do I make myself clear?
No, absolutely.
Yeah, a, a lot of people know about this program. It's just whether they come or not.
Right.
Okay.
We don't just want, Pastor Riley, I, I like your program. I mean, I think it's heard a good thing. My only issue with the program is I don't like the way it's administered. The town of a day should not be paying ten ninety-nine employees to be working down there. We should not take that responsibility if you're still paying. Y'all should have a, a nonprofit number that we, you know, if we're going, if we're going to give monies to that, we give that, and y'all administer within your bylaws and stuff, rather than the town, because if we're paying you workers' comp, this is what I would say, if somebody were to get hurt, and it could, you know, could happen. Well, they, they're on the job, they're on the job, they're, they're playing basketball with somebody there, and they're being there, ten ninety-nine employee, if they don't have workers' comp, they can sue the town for our workers' comp. And they're not on there, they're not being hailed, isn't it?
Excuse me, I didn't rightly interrupt you.
No.
The only other thing that I can think of that needs to be checked into, you know, it's not, it's just structural, it's probably. We don't know if there's, who has insurance. School, dress, school building and the city's funding. But we, the city, I don't think has anything on the record of insuring anyone down there. I don't know what the school board does or not, we haven't checked on that. So, if somebody gets hurt, there's more issues than the workers' comp. It's lawsuits, we don't have insurance. I mean, there's not insurance. So that's going to be something we have to, somebody, we gotta get the school board to find out who's going to do what as far as covering the liability part of it. So just get this property right, it's something we need to implement too. On the front.
All right. Problem that is, we discussed the same things last year. We need to, we need to find out if school, we did.
I mean, I mean, but this was.
But I just admit, we did discuss that, but nobody did anything. So now, I'm going to say we need to definitely do that tomorrow. Because if this program's going to continue, that was my concern, I think I brought it up last year, was liability, who's responsible? Us or the school board? Now, that's a pretty easy thing to find now, you know, but the other thing is, I like what Robert's idea was. If you run a business, you know by your sales whether you have customers or not. Assigning and she is nothing hard to do. You know how many people are coming in and out. You know how many people participate in the program. So my idea, his idea there is a great idea, because I think everybody should sign in, everybody should sign out. Because when you come in, you need a control, because what if you like somebody in that building? And you like them, and y'all go back through there to look and see if they're in there? We know that it's school property, so that's not a bad idea to sign in, sign out.
It's a horrible idea.
Well, that's my idea, right? So I know, I mean, you have ideas, a lot different, so we've worked together a long time, but let me finish.
They run the program down there, they don't, don't, and they don't sign in and out.
Okay, but that's your idea and that's my idea, and that's why we all communicate and have ideas. I don't agree with everything you say, I've had it done for years, right? But we agree to a lot of things, right? But that's, that's the way to think. But that's his idea too, but there's a lot of people that think that might be a good idea, properly. And if it's not a good idea, that's why we just.
What is the purpose of signing?
Because you know how many people come in. It gives you a record of.
Come, come down and see how many people are signing.
I can't come down there every day. It's just a matter of what's the problem with, with.
What you just said is the key. You can't come down every day. People that come down there, the plate don't come every day. People that come down there to function and the activity don't come every day.
We can argue this all the way, this is being something.
I tell you.
I've been making this a statement, and whether you agree or not.
In all due respect, in all due respect to the mayor and all the Aldermen in the city of a day, never mind, I still own the program, won't nobody get paid, but the program will go on. And just remember, you all have to answer to somebody on election time.
Have we, have we even said? Hey, right? Now, you just gave up your guts right there.
I don't care.
Cause you just said, well, I'm not giving away, so I'm gonna go home and play something else. That's my.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over the gym every evening.
But that's all. We had made a decision here, we're just talking about it. We're just discussing.
Ms. Friend, that's all.
I was a teacher for forty-one years. If we took children anyway or had them, we were accountable for every child. And we had a list and we knew where they went and they left. If a parent came and wanted to know where that child was, we knew who picked them up and back. And I think that's very important in this day and time. And I'm not trying to argue with anybody. I'm stating a fact of the safety. We're living in a very different world.
If a parent dropped that child off and he signs in for that, then they know he went there to sign in. And if he went in the building and he's not coming out till he signs out, then that keeps that child safe. Now, that's what I, exactly what you said, Ms. Friend.
Ald, Alderman Pro.
As a former worker for the recreation department, I worked that program from eight in the morning to three. Police jury and other recreation board required that we take any notes on who came and who went. There was even a lunch program during that daytime. Now, I volunteered during this program because I wanted to see that, that, that's what they're, we're not talking about babies at night, y'all. We're not talking about babies coming in at two in the morning, people who have to be supervised. We're talking about those that will probably be somewhere else doing something else that we might need to talk about at a different time. That's got some outlet. The program has been successful. I think you can give the stats on the number of times that he's had to call the police. But I can't tell you how many times that little more issues come up that the preacher can address and do them away that these youngsters understand.
I agree with that.
We start with the pastor, no sad. We start with your mother. You can't say, if you can't say it around your mommy, you can't say it around me. It's little things that's reinforced like that with this program that has definitely helped this program. And Robert Alderman, he said that he, he comes in the program before Alderman Law. So he know how is, how it's structured. And I think that's a fact too. And he, you know how he is about certain things, and you know how those children have to conduct themselves, or those young adults have to conduct themselves. This is an extension of Sunday, because they are under the guy, the tutor of this pastor. And if eight thousand dollars, four, six, whatever, no, you just say it's too much to invest in our unit. We realize this.
That's not even where the math is right. That's not even, because like I saw Raymond, me and him worked together for years. We agreed on a lot of things, we don't agree on other things, okay? It's not about that. Me and him argued like this for years. You know, and not, not ugly, but we just didn't agree. I'm, I'm all for the program. I'm not against the program. And I know Raymond will make those people do what they're supposed to do without a doubt. And I think it's a positive. I mean, because he will take care of his down there. There's no doubt there. He's not gonna let them, like you said, bang, you pay the smart mouth, those kind of things. He's gonna take care of that. That's not a problem. But I thought what Ms. Friend said is my concern. And again, you're not dealing with kids like you do in the morning program, I'm sure, you know? But what if there was something to happen? You know, that you signed, you said, I dropped my kid off, and he was a ninth grader, eighth grader, or something like that, you know? And then he didn't show back up at home, and I dropped him off and he didn't, but he didn't sign in. That's the kind of, same kind of deal I'm talking about. Whether they're signing in is a good thing or not, I can't say that. I'm just saying that's, that's my thoughts.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I didn't say I was against the program, even, I am Robert's mom. I worked on a summer program also. I know how it is with some programs. My thing is just having families. They should have just, they should just have this family. It's other people that need jaws and need to work. That's my problem with the program. My son goes down there also too. And he, he has his days, his good days, and he said the program is fine. I say it's not a lot enough kids, because they're not putting enough information out there for a lot of people to be there. So that's my problem.
And I, and I, I haven't heard, Pastor, I haven't heard anybody that I think would be against the program. I hadn't heard anybody say that. However, the way it's administered and, and how we deliver the funds to that does need to be addressed. I, I think, you know, if, if, if council is in favor of appropriating those funds for the program, I think that as, as Alderman Pro said, yeah, maybe we should have done our homework and had these issues ironed out about liability, insurance, you know? We all been established with a, a nonprofit designation, uh, that just relieves the town. We, you know, we can, we can donate to a nonprofit for, you know, the social welfare and well-being of our citizens. We can make those things that we determine of. But to actually make the check out to those individuals, I think is not very good. And again, that's, that's all of them.
Okay, well, let me say, let me say this. And I could understand concerns, again, with, uh, my relatives working there. They're grown. They've been working there free for years, and when they got old enough to be legal, they, I just hired. The program kept going on. Policeman called in at one time for a fight. That was between two brothers that wouldn't stop fighting. Okay? Never ever, uh, have, have you had problems since you've been the chief of police down there? Is it shared with somebody here? Have any of y'all ever heard any problem with anything going on at that school? Frank Duson, when he was working at the police department, he would come in with a police shirt on, play ping pong, sit down in the gym all night long. His kids, both kids come up through the program. Now, if you wanted to go on the, uh, a program that you donate money to, an organization with the church, it's called Big Brother and Big Brothers, uh, organization that's five oh one C. And if you want to donate the money in there, let the church write the money to the employee, fine. I don't have a problem doing that. I've got things in place to do that. But when I left here last year, Mr. Murray said he would look at insurance and the liability debt. Now today, again, I come to you a year and a week later, and you still got to look at the same, same thing.
Well, if Mr. Pro, we have talked to Alderman Law about whether the police jury had, I mean, the school board had insurance. We know we don't. I know that. We do not.
I'm, I'm the school board president. No, we don't have insurance on that program.
Okay, say it, Raymond, you can tell them that.
But we don't need, and I do know that, we do not, so, we're all right.
But he said he could handle that through his church, I mean.
I mean, we, we have an organization, and you all want to write a, a check out for four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars, which covers the whole program for the whole summer, to, uh, the organization at the church. And then each, every two weeks, I'll write a check out to the employees. I mean, and therefore, my church insurance can take care of it. We hadn't had to pay liability insurance in twenty-seven years. And I understand things happen, don't get me wrong. I understand things happen. But hadn't had anybody to get hurt, anything to happen, nothing to get tore, other than wear and tear on equipment, which you wear and tear, your car will every time you open the cover, so everything's going to get wear and tear. But we are making excuses of something that's been beneficial to the black community, and not only the black community, because there are kids from First Baptist Church, whatever that church is across the railroad track down there, uh, they come there, uh, after church. You know, it's not open just to, to blacks. It's open up for anybody in the city of a days. If you want to put on some shorts, come play some basketball ping pong, sit down and play some dominoes, checkers, cards, whatever you want to do, it's activity, it's there for you. I mean, I can give you an answer to every, every concern you got. It's just whether you concerned enough about the community to say yes.
Okay, and you being a school board president, why don't we, uh, handle it that way, since you the president?
No, we don't want to go through the school.
No, I'm not saying go through it, but you, you know for sure there's no insurance, which, if they go into that school, there's got to be some type of total liability the school board has on, on the building, you know, which would cover.
The school system has nothing to do with this program.
No, not that program. I'm just saying, if they were injured in that building, the school would still be responsible for that problem, that problem, when you think.
No, the program would be responsible.
The program, it was the program.
He said it was the program.
But if we run that building, our church, that would, that would.
I mean, you just, you just, that's the point we're making. You say the school board not like it. We're writing the check to you guys, city of a day, to you as individuals. So that automatically can pull the city of a day into a liability. Hey, look, it's wonderful that you got the track record, yes, wonderful, that's why everybody here support it. However, we know that sooner or later, that something could happen and, and town could be dragged in, but go live into a lawsuit that we just shouldn't be put ourselves in. We can handle it a different way, just still let your program go, just participate.
Okay, well, as far as you're concerned, would you have a problem taking that, what'd you call it, Raymond?
Big Brother.
Big Brother?
It's called Big Brother. It, it's just an organization that I organize at church.
I'm for the, I'm for the program. I'm for the money. I'm for the opportunity. But just like you, I have concerns, but if we run that through the Big Brother, that's a church thing.
I, that's, that's what I would rather see. I, that's, that's what I would rather say.
So, and if you're willing to do that, I don't see anything wrong with that. That's my opinion.
Any other comment from me, the other alderman, how you feel?
I just want to go over record that I'm not against this program. I do want to see this program continue. But I just want to make sure everything is done decently and all that. It's always been done decently in all that. That's why you never heard any problem with it. Ms. Doran, that's personal.
One of the things that with the five oh one C three, um, you need to check the way that it's structured to make sure that you can pay wages from your five oh one C. You really need, I think everybody, I know I am, I can speak only for myself, who can say this way. I'm all in. I'm all in. And I will help you in every way that we can to get it structured so that the town continues to participate and satisfies all the, the boxes that need to be done. But I, I do think that you need to check with your five oh one C three bylaws and make sure that you're set up to receive the funds and then pay out, um, payroll from that five oh one C three. Um, cause it depends on how you're structured and how you're set up with, with those bylaws that you have. Just a, just a cautionary. That's why I wasn't going to say it out loud. I was going to talk to everybody.
I haven't, you got to pay this month, Raymond. I mean, you're, you got to make the already work.
They worked last week and they worked yesterday.
I just told them, we're getting the money, you know, I have to put myself to cover it, but I'm just saying, let us, let us, let you check.
Here's, here's the thing.
And then we'll, we'll get that in.
If you all agree with the program and you donate the funds to the organization, then you're donating to that organization and the responsibility is totally ours.
That's my opinion too, but.
I make the motion that we make the donation to the organization, Big Brother Little Brother, um, so everything can be satisfied with.
Can we call it sponsorship instead of donation?
Sponsorship.
God, I mean.
Uh, contribution.
What do you think, George?
Sponsorship, contribution would probably be the best way to do it.
I would say sponsorship, you know, because Constitution states you cannot donate, it says it says donate. But however, there is an exclusion for, you know, the social well-being or social welfare persons. You can do those things for programs part of that. But, you know, you split the hair, call it a donation or sponsorship. Sponsorship, I think sounds better to me than a donation because donations work scary when you donate.
I say it to my.
In the amount of four thousand two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand.
Our motion made by Alderman Gardner, right here, second. Alderman Corrigan, second. All in favor, raise your hand. And all in favor. Mike Rowe calling, we'll start. On the left, it's Alderman Doray.
Ford.
Alderman McCoy.
Ford.
Alderman Betts.
Ford.
Alderman Gardner.
Ford.
Alderman Corrigan.
Ford.
I want to thank you all and I appreciate everything.
From President Sam Moore, just me, copy of how we work, secret, the best organizations. All right, number ten, um, defer this alderman Doray, she can discuss the July fourth festivities coming up in July.
The, um, the Vidalia Beautification Committee, the majority of the members are here for you tonight. Um, we are having the second annual Fourth of July Festival on the Riverfront, Wednesday, July fourth, from ten AM to ten PM. This is a one hundred percent free community event. We'll have live entertainment from ten AM to ten PM. We will have specialty food vendors, snow cones and Italian ice vendors, flea markets. The Vidalia Dog Pound is going to be there with adoptable pets. There'll be games for the children. We signed on a petting zoo for the kids today. I'm really excited about that one. Um, and then of course, we have the grand finale fireworks that this year, the Vidalia Beautification Committee took the responsibility of continuing that tradition. Um, so we have that slated again. That is on Wednesday, the Fourth of July. It is an all-day event. Um, Alderman Gardner signed up to sing for us. We're really excited about that and we appreciate him lending his voice to it. Um, the Beautification Committee, of course, what, we, we did this last year. It wasn't quite as large. We saw such great participation that the committee wanted to expand a little bit and offer a little bit more. Of course, we were the, um, the sponsors of the Christmas on Carter Street decorating contest, which was a lot of fun at Christmas time. We did the decorating of the old courthouse in Vidalia. And so we're, during each season, we're trying to accomplish something that just brings unity to the community and helps beautify the, the town and surrounding areas. So this season, we are doing that Fourth of July festival. We're really excited about it. We have flyers here that if any of y'all are business owners, you can put up in your business if you would. We really appreciate it. Um, so that we can get a lot of people out and, and start creating that, that community unity.
Question. Are you going to have the big flag?
Yes, we are going to have the twenty foot by thirty foot flag as donated by the, um, Point Man Ministries from Douglas McAllister. Um, oh, and he's also, Ted had to remind me, uh, Mr. McAllister is going to be there with, he is getting a model made of the replica wall that will soon be put at the riverfront. So he is going to be there with a booth so that everybody can see that, um, and, you know, of course, it's going to be small scale, but he'll have a lot of information there for that. So far to date, as of today, we now have twelve vendors signed up. We have six activities for the youth and families to do. Uh, we have. Two choirs. We have a full day of entertainment and it's going to be, you know, everything from, you know, rock, metal, gospel, country and choirs. Hey, if somebody signed up and said, we're a Vidalia band, we want to play, we said, thank you, come on. We didn't turn anybody away. We wanted something for everybody at this event, so, yes.
Thank y'all for your work. That's my name.